So you're all ready then, huh? Okay, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order and get started. This is the consolidated agenda and meeting for the City Council, the Buena Sanitation District, and the Community Development Commission. And we're very pleased to have you here with us this evening. And it's Pastor Mike Bradford of the New Community Church here this evening. Okay, if you'd stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll have roll call.
The record will show that all members are present.
Okay, very good. And approval of agenda, are there any items to be added or deleted?
There are no additions or deletions, Mayor.
Okay, we did have a closed session prior to this meeting. And we'll ask the city attorney to please give us a report of that closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the council met in closed session to discuss the four items that were on this evening's closed session agenda scheduled for 4:00 PM. No action was taken that was required to be reported at this time. There is a special meeting scheduled for 5:30 for another closed session which will be held at the end of this meeting. And the council will return after the end of that closed session to report any actions that would be taken then.
Okay, very good, thank you. This evening, we have two proclamations. It gives me a great deal of pleasure to announce the first presentation that we have, and that's the annual Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive. And so I would like to invite up Fred Salter, Teresa Cooper, Lucy Lopez, and Valerie Garrett. And whoever else that they had brought that they would like to have come forward. Roger. Roger, okay, and then Clarence from Hubble.
I have a bug much. Clarence found he had a different Catholic charities he had to get. He's working right now. We're gonna take pictures.
Oh, okay. Very good. We have a proclamation. I know this is an annual thing that you do, and we look forward to every year. And let me go ahead and read the proclamation, and then we'll turn it over to you. Okay, it says, "Whereas the Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive is October 16th, 17th, and 18th of 2009, and whereas over 550 councils of the Knights of Columbus in California will conduct their annual candy drive in communities across the state to raise funds for developmentally disabled children and adults in California in its 22nd annual drive. Whereas all money collected locally will be donated to organizations such as Vista Special Olympics and Downs Town. Whereas developmentally disabled citizens, especially in financially times like these, need the support of the public so that they can develop and be productive, contributing members of society. And whereas the Vista City Council offers its sincere appreciation and support of all involved with this candy drive and commend them for their efforts to help others. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim October 16th, 17th, and 18th, 2009 as Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive Days in the City of Vista, and urge all citizens to support this important fundraising activity to help developmentally disabled children and adults in Vista and all throughout the state of California." So thank you very much. Okay.
Last year I was asked to speak, I didn't have anything prepared. This night I wrote a little bit. This weekend is the Knights of Columbus's 22nd annual fundraising drive to benefit people with intellectual disabilities. There are 450,000 children, adults with disability in the state of California. The Knights of Columbus have 1.7 million members, and this event's going to be nationwide. I was in Fort Riley, Kansas in 2004 at this date, and there were people at the store collecting money. I would like to thank the City of Vista, and the Mayor Vance, and the City Council for this proclamation. And I would also like to thank Stater Brothers on North Santa Fe Avenue, Walmart, Sams Club Office Sycamore, Albertson on East Vista Way, Food for Less, and Fraser Farms for allowing us to use their stores for this event. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Was there something else you wanted to do?
Yes.
Yeah, we have two to roll. Go, go through it. Go up there.
Okay.
And we also have, if people want to give bigger donations, we have--
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sure there's people in the audience would like to contribute as well. I see Mr. Abel is one of the first. Okay, the second presentation that we have this evening is Mr. Lopez here, Mr. Uribe Lopez. Please come forward, Mr. Lopez. Mr. Lopez has been appointed to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission effective September 22nd. And we'd like to present you with your certificate and congratulate you. Thank you very much. We look forward to working with you.
All right. Same as often.
Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is our consent calendar. These are items that can be considered with one vote. And because of their ministerial nature, and so that tonight we have items, what is it, 1 through 816. And we've had requests from the audience to remove item C4, C9, and C10, and C16. Are there any other items that the council would like to remove from the consent calendar?
Mayor, I'd move for adoption, but I need to abstain on C11 due to a business relationship with Mr. Willis.
Okay. Mr. Lopez, did you have something? Okay. Mr. City Attorney, he doesn't have to leave, does he?
It's being discussed.
If it's being discussed, then he would need to leave at that point.
At that point, you'll have to leave then, okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Just please cast your votes. Just a second, could you redo that? We have a button that was pushed wrong. Okay, let's revote. Okay. Okay, the remaining portion of the consent calendar was approved unanimously. Okay, the very first item is C4. That was pulled by Mr. Greg Sowalski. Oh, Sidowski, I'm sorry, Mr. Sidowski. Well, no, it's just I was trying to read the writing. I'm sorry, excuse me.
My good. Thank you, I appreciate the time.
Before you start, just for those in the audience, this is the second reading of an ordinance. And the ordinance is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the Charter City of the City of Vista Approving an Amendment to Specific Plan Number 26 to Modify the Permitted Uses Within the CV1 Subzone to Allow a Total of 2,500 Square Feet of Medical Office Space." Okay?
And I'll back up Greg Sidowski here with Regency Centers representing the Vista Village Phase 1 Limited Partnership. Want to thank you again for letting me come up and speak. I appreciate the time that each council member spent with me to chat about this issue. I do want to make one quick statement and make one regret that happened. I know that was brought up in discussions, that a lease that we put together with the proposed dentist, we apologize that it did show up in a publication, a local journal, saying that the lease was a final lease. It was not a final lease. It is a tentative lease with pending getting City Council approval to adopt the specific plan amendment. So we do apologize about that. Secondly, and probably lastly, I want to thank the staff for all their help in putting this together, and with all our great relationships that we built over the years in building Vista Village. If there's any other questions regarding this, I would be here to answer them for you.
Are there any questions from the City Council or comments from the City Council? Okay, Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to have met Mr. Jabahari. He represented his family's interests very well. And Greg, thank you for coming in along with your associate to talk with me about that. First, I'd like to comment on Regency, what a great job you've done with that center and how you continue to maintain high standards and work with the community. So thank you very much for that. For the reference to that's the council, I told Mr. Sidowski due to the Brown Act, I can't talk to any of the council members without violating Brown Act, so I have not. My concern was with an investment of the public's money, $55 million in the center. I recognize that the intent is to have a community center where people can go and enjoy themselves, and that's great, they do. And we've had just, I think, great success mutually for the city and for you, Mr. Sidowski. But I am concerned that by bringing medical uses in, it's not consistent with what our need is, is to generate sales tax in order to pay the bill, if you will. I realize that it's a time when there's a lot of vacancies, and this indeed would be a very excellent tenant to have in any center, I agree with that. But I'm not sure it's the focus of this center, nor should it be. And I think I've expressed my concern about that. I did meet with a dentist yesterday without being more specific than that, asked him what he would think about coming into that center. He didn't think it was where his type of practice. And this may be a different kind of practice, more retail oriented, more, from what I understood from Mr. Jabahari, one that will be working more to build a fairly substantial practice there and have some retail elements to it. But I just need to share with the council, I don't think it's the intent of our planning for the center to include this use. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gronky.
You know, I also met with the applicant. I voted for this measure the first time around, and I'm going to vote for it again. And I think it just speaks to the time. I think right now, we need to consider Regency's center there, really with the recession. I know you've had some hardships, and so I think everybody's had some hardships. And I think we just need to extend a hand and help out someone who's really come into our city and done a great job for us. So I will support this again.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. With the times that we have today, it's very difficult. There's a lot of empty buildings in the City of Vista. And one of the things that, that area was more for entertaining and more for sales tax. But one of the things that I looked at it after last council meeting was that it maybe was the wrong type of business in there. But when you look at the type of business that's there, that's going in there, and it's only 2,500 square feet. But the people who are there, who are going to come to that dentist shop, or the other one, whatever it's going to be, those folks, some of those folks will be having lunch. Maybe they'll be waiting for an appointment, they'll have lunch, they'll be spending money. And I think it would be a good mix there. And I will be supporting this tonight, and good luck. Thank you.
Okay, I can't imagine, you know, going to a dentist not being entertaining. I think it fits in right with the other entertaining. Okay, any more comments or questions from Mrs. Ritter? Didn't show up over here. I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, I would just, my comments kind of reflect all of the rest of theirs. But I just wanted to say, I know that it's a current difficult economy right now for retail, and so I'm going to go along and I'll approve this. But on the revised specific plan text change, it says P2, and it says, when you look at the two, it says optometrist only with aggregate of 2,500 square feet in CV1. So I'm thinking that that needs to be changed so that it reflects.
I'm sure Mr. Conley will have a motion when the appropriate time comes for us to consider.
We don't have the motion now?
Well, when we're done discussing it.
Oh. Okay, so, that would be my comment.
Okay, very good. I didn't have an opportunity, or didn't take the opportunity to speak to Mr. Sidowski about this, or the potential proponent, or not proponent, but dentist that's going to be locating there. But I am not, I'm not voting in favor of having a dentist there because of the economy. I think that when we first started talking about the downtown, I always considered it to be a place not just for sales tax generation, not just for entertainment, but for all types of services for the local community to be involved in. And I still think that. So I don't think that a dentist is out of character in that area. And I will stay with what I said at the last council meeting and voted for. So what kind of a motion do we need?
The motion would be to reconsider the item and vote in favor of the original staff recommendation, which was for both optometrists and dentists in that 2,500 square feet, Mayor.
And so then that means that that ordinance then would be, that would be voting for the previous ordinance?
That would be correct. That would be the first vote of a new ordinance.
Okay. And so we would then have the second reading at a subsequent meeting?
If it doesn't pass by four-fifths vote.
Okay, do we have that motion made by the City Council?
Yes.
Okay, and that would be to reconsider and to adopt, or to, not to adopt, but to introduce the previous ordinance. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, please cast your votes. Okay, that motion passes four to one with Mr. Campbell voting no.
Thank you.
So there is no need for a second reading on this particular ordinance. Okay, the next item that was pulled was number, oh, excuse me, you know, I forgot. I probably don't want to speak now, but Mr., the dentist, Mr. Jabahari, did you want to still speak? Okay, all right. You're welcome. And I apologize for not calling on you. Okay, the next item is number C9. And that item is property acquisition of 123 to 219 South Santa Fe Avenue. And the person pulling that is Mr. Chuck Abel. So Mr. Abel, if you'd please come forward.
Would the council like a report first, or would you like to listen to comments?
I think we'll listen to the speaker first, and then we'll hear a report.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Chuck Abel, 821 Crescent Drive, Vista. If I could address both C9 and C10 together in the, save us all time.
Fine.
C9, well, again, addressing both of them, I guess the strategy is for the city to buy up distressed properties down in the redevelopment area, even though we, the zoning hasn't been affected, hasn't changed yet. And in particular on C9, we're talking property on South Santa Fe. And this is, a while back, maybe two meetings ago, there was a item pulled, the city was going to buy property opposite Old Georgia's Hardware Store, opposite Eucalyptus on South Santa Fe. And anyway, it got pulled, and with that transaction, the funding source was to be the housing fund. And had that item not been pulled, I would have been, I would have obviously objected to using the housing fund for buying commercially zoned property. In the case of C9, the, there's a, the financing is with balloon payments. And again, I want to be on record that that's not, should not be funded through the housing fund. And in both items, I do want to urge again that off-record or off-books accounting gets started to account for the loss of the funding stream while these properties sit idle. On C10, and I'll close, the, on page eight talks about making a deposit with Judy Hill, the escrow holder. I believe that should be amended to Chicago title. You're dealing with a much bigger entity, and should something go wrong, you go after the deep pockets, not the employee of the title company. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Abel. Mr. Rawlings, would you like to give us some more information about the funding of this, as well as the strategy?
Certainly. The goal that we've been pursuing is to acquire properties for the purposes of redevelopment in the South Santa Fe area. And given our future expected use of mixed-use development, which would include both housing and commercial development, it may, from time to time, be appropriate to use housing funds and as well as non-housing funds.
Are we using housing funds in this particular instance on C9 and C10?
C9, we are not.
C9, we are not, and I believe we potentially are on 10. It depends on the timing of when we close the transaction. So we would have the flexibility to use housing or not. We envision mixed-use development in both cases, and so the housing would be appropriate for C10.
Now, what happens if we don't do mixed housing, or mixed use on those, and we've used the housing funds to?
We are required to keep track of how we use housing funds, and to the extent, if we were to use housing funds to acquire a piece of property and subsequently not develop housing on it, that money is required to be returned to the housing fund. So we keep an accounting of that and make sure that it is used for housing.
You know, I happen to agree with Mr. Abel in terms of housing funds, the use of housing funds, and have been an advocate of doing some housing, you know, low-income housing and other housing within the community. And so I would like to see as much as possible try to avoid using housing funds in these purchases. And then if they're not going to be used immediately, then I don't think we ought to, because of the fact that it does tie up those housing funds. And I quite frankly would like to see more housing take place.
We certainly can do that.
Mr. Gronky, did you have some comments? Well, was this a carryover from the last?
I think so, but I will--
I've never seen a councilwoman who would ask that wouldn't comment. Sure, go ahead.
You know, I think the policy here is the policy that was set by council members almost two decades ago, and that was to redevelop the old downtown in Santa Fe. And so whether we're taking advantage of distressed properties right now, probably to our advantage, but really never the intentions of our actions today. I think our actions speak to the fact that we want to keep, we want to keep true to what we wanted to do years and years ago, and what people expected out of redevelopment. So I feel very comfortable in this decision. Also, I feel comfortable too in using housing funds, because I can see this as, because of the mixed-use components, a real good opportunity to provide long-term housing along this corridor for individuals that really need it. And it's my hope, it's my hope that these properties won't be purchased today and left vacant for a while, but we'll be redeveloping as soon as possible. And I know that you'll be assisting with that process, so it'll happen. So I feel comfortable with the decisions we're making right now. I think that's a good idea to purchase both these properties. I guess we'll talk about nine right now. But it's certainly a blighted area, and if ever was a term for blighted, I think this is the definition. This is probably what you'll find in the dictionary if you look up the term. So let's move on it.
Actually, I think the state of California came down and looked at that and said, yeah, that's our definition for blight. Okay. No, well, let's go ahead and consider, I don't believe Mr. Abel wanted to speak again on those two items, did you? Okay, let's go ahead and consider both items at once then. I think that's perfectly in order.
Well, I'd like to speak, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Lopez. I, it wasn't working, and I redid it, so I lost anyone that was in the queue, so.
Thank you. There has been property in the past bought by housing funds, which maybe wasn't the right thing to do at that time. But this number nine, number nine, to me, is a piece of property that I'm pretty sure we're not going to build houses there on that strip. And it sure doesn't look like it to me. And my opinion, I would hate to use housing funds on that particular, on number nine. I can't say anything on number 10, but that would be more appropriate to use--
No, you can't say anything. You can't say anything. So saying it's appropriate is not appropriate.
I would vote to not use housing funds on number nine.
And as a point of clarification, I'm sorry--
Okay, then.
As a point of clarification, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. There are no plans to use housing funds for number nine, which would not-- not result in, which is not planned for housing in the future.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to have to consider these separately, since Mr. Lopez spoke on one that he could speak on, and spoke on one that he shouldn't have spoke on. Okay, so let's take number nine, do we have a motion on number nine?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, please cast your votes. And that passes unanimously, okay, entertain a motion on number ten, C ten.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for number ten.
Second.
Mr. Lopez, you don't have to leave, or does he? Oh, okay, never mind, never mind.
He's doing right.
He's doing right, all right. We have a motion and a second, okay, please cast your votes on C ten. Motion was made by Mr. Gronky. Now Rita can't make a motion. Judy can. Okay, Judy, and Judy made the motion, and Gronky the second. Okay, next item is number sixteen. Yes, he did. Okay. Number C sixteen, which is the 2008, 2009 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Let's, why don't we have Mr. Rabel come forward, he's the one that pulled this, and he can make his comment, and then we can see if there's any questions that need to be asked.
Yeah, it's me again. Seems like the amount of money that goes through the CBDG gets smaller every year. The appropriation they're talking about is a million one seven one, okay? And some time ago, we, city was dialing for dollars to complete the Corian project, and they use the CBDG money as a lender of convenience, and as you can see from page twelve of your report, half a million dollars of the, a million two is going to service the, going into debt service. You add to that the $220,000 for overhead and administration, you're talking $735,000 against the a million, million one total. Not a whole lot's getting done with the money, and that wasn't the intention of the feds when they came up with this funding source. Just for the record, nothing's happening when you look at the page twelve. But yeah, we're, the city's keeping up with its necessary debt service, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the City Council? Or comments, okay, I don't believe, do we, since this was a consent calendar, I don't believe we need a staff report at this point. Do we have a motion?
I have a comment.
Okay, Mr. Lopez.
I ask, is that the writing on these numbers a little bit bigger? I cannot see them hardly, it's hard, difficult to have double glasses, thank you.
Okay, any other comments by members of the City Council?
I would like to thank staff for honoring our request that we reduce the amount that goes to administration, and I see that's been done now sequentially, two years in a row at least, and I think that's important to follow good faith that we deliver more money to the projects. Thank you, I'd be glad to make a motion for approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other comments by the City Council? Please cast your votes. Okay, and that is passed unanimously. The next item is a discussion item, D one, which is Proposition 1A scrutinization program, or securitization, well, it means be scrutinized as well. Securitization program authorization and amendment, I think the writing does need to be a little bit bigger.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Tom Gardner, I'm your finance director. As all of us may recall, back in 2004, the citizens voted for Prop 1A, what that proposition did was attempted to secure local property tax and sales tax from the state rate. However, during the writing of that constitutional amendment, there was a compromise that said if the state is in a situation of financial crisis, they may in fact borrow those funds from us. They have been in a state of crisis, and so they are going to borrow those funds from us. The amount of funds that are anticipated to be borrowed from the city of Vista would be $1,665,927, I checked with the auditor staff this afternoon, and we are within $200 of their estimate, as well as the League of Cities estimates. However, that figure may increase slightly if there are cities that are forgiven a takeaway because of their own fiscal crisis. Those are called hardship cities, and there may be several in the county, and if those are granted, then our number will go up slightly, that number will be revised in November. The idea behind the securitization program is, yes, the state is going to take 1.6 million from us. If, without a program, what would happen is we'd get to wait for three years, they would promise 2% interest on that loan and pay us back in three years. Our difficulty is, is that we don't have 1.6 million dollars that we don't need for operations and for functions of the city, and therefore, as many as, many other cities also in that same situation, what we'd like to do is figure out a way out of that, okay? The bill is SB 67, it's still not yet enacted by the legislature, and what it proposes to do is to establish something called California Communities. This is a third party, it's a joint powers authority, and it's being set up for the sole purposes of financing an alternative. And the easiest way to explain it real quickly is just kind of walk through it. If the state takes 1.6 from us, and they owe it back to us, we have essentially a note or a receivable that's worth something. What we're going to do as a result of these contracts is sell that note to California Communities. What do they get out of it? Well, California Communities can collect the 300 cities' notes, or so, almost 700 agencies are now willing to participate in this program, they'll collect those notes, and based upon that promissory note, sell a bond, and investors will pay them cash. With the proceeds of the bond, California Communities pays us the face value of our note, and the relationship then becomes before, between California Communities and the state of California, with the state of California, to pay back California Communities so that they can pay off the bonds. That gets us out of the equation, allows us to receive the full value of our lost funds, we don't get the 2%, but we don't care, because we'd rather have our cash and be able to operate our budget, and not have to live on the promissory that they're going to get around to at three years from now, and not come up with some kind of arrangement at that time to get out of that. It's not that I don't trust the state of California, I've been in this business for 31 years, but I don't trust the state of California. So, what we're proposing today is a resolution and contracts to set that in motion. If Prop 67 is not passed, all this is null and void, if the bonds aren't sold, all of this is null and void, and we go back to the drawing board. The contract itself, you may note in your agenda that when you look at the resolution and the contract, the writing looks a little odd, and the little odd is, is that our city, the City Council's name, or the city of Vista, has been plugged into two documents that have been standardized statewide. So we've been asked not to, not to change the margins, not to change the footers, not to change anything about them, so that the state gets back some 700 agreements that all look exactly alike. So with the assistance of the city attorney and our staff, we've reviewed those and recommended the council move towards this option, which essentially, if it goes through as planned and is executed as promised, would leave us revenue neutral for the 2010 fiscal year.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez, do you have a question?
So you're saying that we will, within a one-year period, after the one-year passes, one year later, we'll receive our money?
We should receive our money on Janu-, in January of 2010 and March of 2010, so within this current fiscal year.
Oh, really, okay, and so the other, the other folks will be receiving the interest, not us?
That's true, community, yes, would receive the interest, and that would offset their cost of both issuing the debt, as well as paying investors, something that in this marketplace is okay. Are most cities doing this? There are 770, if I'm remembering the agenda, I believe 770 entities, about 400 special districts, 300 cities, and about 55 of the counties, virtually all the counties are doing. Okay. Oh, there's three, there are 58 counties, so three haven't signed up yet.
Okay, Mr. Gronky?
No cost to the city, you know, my experience is that whenever you bond, there's certain carrying costs and so forth, but that's all borne by the third.
Right, the third party is initiating the bond issuance, it'll be done under their name and their authority, it's a joint powers authority, and they will incur all the costs.
And so when this is finally paid back by the state, really ultimately the taxpayer is the one that's on the hook for the, bearing the cost and the interest rate too.
Taxpayer was going to be on the hook for the 2%, whether they paid it to us or paid it to California Communities.
Fair enough.
The answer to your question is yes, sir.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any downside that we need to know about on this, because it sounds to me like something you'd want to do, considering the state doesn't quite have their act together.
I think this is the best offer that's on the table.
Any downside?
Not that I can see if it's executed as planned.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Gelder?
Just to add is that SB 67 is still, is still not passed, and there's a big push to, there's a 15-day deadline to get that going, and if, so the legislature needs to act, and we've sent in many letters and made phone calls even as of today to make sure that there's an emphasis in urging all of our legislators to vote yes to pass that.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion to adopt City Council Resolution Number 2009, next in order, and to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and related documents on behalf of the city. Okay, we have a motion and a second, please cast your votes. Okay, and that is adopted unanimously. Okay, that concludes the discussion items, we have one request to speak under oral communication, Wilma Crossen.
Wilma Crossen, 1156 Via Santa Paulo, I live in a senior community, Vista Del Mar. We built our home in 2004, 2005, and I have a problem with BID, Vista Irrigation District. When we built our home, after the back, we had to tear the ceilings out to install a sprinkling fire alarm system, at a cost of about $10,000. Because of that system, every bill I pay $44.40 for a meter that is not used, and I resent that cost. My bill for a single person living in a senior community with rock in my yard is $102. That is ridiculous. Now whether this council can do anything or not, I don't know, but I am, I lost my husband in November, I'm on a fixed budget, and I cannot afford $102 for a water bill.
Well, Mrs. Crossen, I don't know if we can help or not, but we'll certainly try.
Thank you, I know Mr. Lopez talked to me about it.
Okay, Mrs. Gelder will.
We have, Mr. Johnson did talk to Mrs. Crossen, and we did check with BID, and that is a correct statement, and so he's tried to intervene on her behalf on BID, but she does need to take it up with BID, we will help her, but I'm not quite sure, we, it was an anomaly, but Mr. Johnson will call them again and see what we can do. But we don't have any jurisdiction over it, but we will certainly continue to take up your cause with BID, but you also need to appear before their board meeting and talk to them.
I have talked to them, and no, I'm getting nowhere.
When you talk to them, did you talk at their board meeting, or did you talk to the staff person?
Just the staff person.
I would go to their board meeting, and I think we can help you with probably some information that you might want to.
I don't mind paying my own way or paying what's fair, but that cost about $10,000 to put it in, we had to rip ceilings out, and now this.
I understand, we'll do everything we can.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mrs. Crossen. There are no other requests to speak under oral communications. Mr. Piper, is there anything that you have to talk about?
No, not in this evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Gelder?
There is not a council meeting for October 27th, our next meeting will be November 3rd if we have a workshop item or two, and then our next regularly scheduled meeting will be November 10th.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez, we'll start down at the end.
Just pass me this time.
Okay, Mr. Campbell?
Well, Ms. Crossen, it's good to see you, it's been a long time, and I'm very sorry about Bill's passing, but we understand your plight, and I'm glad to see the city manager's going to try and help where she can.
Okay, Mrs. Ritter?
The other thing is I wanted to announce that the firemen are having a pancake breakfast Saturday morning from, I believe it starts at eight, from eight till 10, and so at Fire Station number six at Wildwood, is it number six?
Yeah.
Yeah, at Wildwood, so come on down and support them, the proceeds will go to Operation Hope, which is our homeless shelter.
Thank you. Mr. Gronky?
Six, six dollars.
Six dollars, oh, it went up.
There was a recent article in the paper about sales tax being, receipts being reduced because of the poorer economy, and I just want to ask the city manager, that doesn't affect prop bell receipts in any way, and jeopardize that bonding?
It certainly does affect prop bell receipts, because it's the half cent is, so when sales tax is not generated, it affects all sales tax measures. However, our model in paying our debt service was very conservative, so we continue to have sufficient revenues to maintain that debt service, and we have that programmed in, even if some additional costs for, with sustained with the fire department, we will continue to have sufficient funds throughout the 30 years of the debt service to pay on that.
Good, good, one other thing, a couple weeks ago, I was asked to help one of the residents with a home next door that was in disrepair, and it kind of came out as a, supposedly it was foreclosure, but it really wasn't that at all, but in the process, I was asked by someone from the media about ways to address foreclosure, and I had recently read an article about Tula Vista's model, and when it came to foreclosure and an ordinance they put through. So ironically, right after that, I had met a couple people, and they said that was a good idea to actually investigate, maybe looking at a more, a more onerous approach to get the banks to pay up and take care of their property, so I'm going to ask the city council if we can maybe consider that, look at the Tula Vista model and maybe consider that in the future.
Well, maybe if the city manager would like to get us some information, then we can take a look.
Last thing I have is just, I think was kind of a feel-good thing that happened today and this afternoon, we did attend a dedication for the statue that was in front of Fire Station number six on East Vista Way, and it's, it's a piece of public art that a lot of people contributed to within the community, and if you haven't had a chance, you should stop by and see it, it's a very touching statue of a fireman kneeling and speaking to a child, and it, I think it gives a good.
And it, I think it gives a good indication of really what our firefighters do, and their work is not only to fight fires and emergencies, but also to maintain public safety for the families that are in the community. So, I think if you could stop by and take a look, I think it'd be well worth your, worth your while doing so. And again, there was a widespread support for this throughout the community, as the firefighters put it together. And so, it's part of the general public art program, I think, that we can look forward to being even better throughout the community. So, with that, we're going to recess this meeting and go into closed session.
Not quite. We're going to adjourn this meeting and convene the special meeting that's left over from 5:30, and then go into closed session, unless there are any public comments that proceed going into closed session.
Whatever the city attorney said, we're going to do.
Sure, let's do that.
Okay, thank you. And then, we'll be back in this meeting, following the closed session. Okay, very good. Then, we're going to meet in.